Let's get started. Department of Economic and Community Development, Mr. Prok.
Yes, Mr. President. The budget before you reflects the division of the Community Planning and Business Services Department into the Economic and Community Development Department and the Office of the Fire Marshal and Permit Services, which was presented to you last Wednesday. The Economic and Community Development budget reflects no increase in personnel and there is a reduction, overall reduction, in the expenditure budget because of the separation of some high-ticket items that were actually under the Fire Marshal's office for professional services, copies of the ICC and memberships, professional memberships that's required for the billing inspectors and the fire marshal. Answer any questions you may have.
Counsel, any questions? Ms. Nicholas?
No questions at this time.
Mr. Smalls?
None for me.
Mr. Liz?
None.
Thank you, Mr. Prok. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Move on to the Police Department. Chief McLaughlin.
Good evening, Mr. President, Councilmembers. Narrative for our budget starts on page 78. The details start on page 93. And if it's okay with you, I'll just hit the highlights of what changes we're trying to make this year. On page 93, 52020, outside services, we're asking for an increase of $525. That is as a result of changes in the Maryland Police Training Commission requirements that police officers have to have a separate set of fingerprints submitted directly to the commission, which has a fee of about $35. And we're anticipating 15 prints to be submitted. 52027, also on page 93, veterinarian services, we're asking for an increase of $2,500. That's the increase of this line item is to cover routine care costs, boarding, as well as unplanned injuries, sicknesses. We've had several dental issues with the five K-9 dogs. Page 93, 52051, membership dues, an increase of $465. That is as a result of having a deputy chief and the membership for the associations that we're members of. Page 94, 52052, subscriptions, an increase of $260. That's due to increases in subscription rates for magazines and books that we have to have, search and seizure, Maryland Annotated Code updates, narcotics law bulletin, investigative stop law bulletin, and the MVA law books. Page 94, 52305, mobile equipment maintenance, an increase of $140. That is as a result of the rise in cost for the certification and calibration of our radar units, 14 radar units, which have to be done by an individual company twice a year. Do you have a question, sir?
No, it's fine.
Okay.
Let me just mention that our pages aren't following yours, Chief.
I'm terribly sorry.
No, no, that's all right. So if you just give us the expenditure number, that'd be good.
52319, which is maintenance other, an increase of $7,734. As we discussed earlier this year, we had a warranty contract with TASER, which had expired, which we renewed for a five-year term in the amount of $11,334. This is year number two, and we had already had $3,600 accounted for for a training simulator update, so we just made up the difference. 52808, community policing, an increase of $1,681. That's for giveaways of National Night Out. We're asking for an increase of $400 to $2,200 for National Night Out. Dare increase of $900 to $4,000. That's based on the T-shirts and the food that we feed the children during the Dare Day. And giveaways, we're asking for an increase of $381 to an amount of $3,500. That's the things that we give away for National Night Out, for, I'm sorry, for the Main Street Trick or Treat, the Mayor's Open House, National Night Out, school visits, Armed Forces Day, bicycle rodeo, different giveaways. 52815, community events, an increase of $1,500. That is based on the fact that we have been doing job fairs. We're funding job fairs. We're going out and doing solicitation. And I'm sure you saw the tent at the Main Street event. We're taking it to job fairs, and job fairs are charged on us. So it's to cover the job fair expenses. That pretty much is the summary of our updates of our budget.
Okay, any questions?
Mr. President?
Go ahead, Ms. Liz.
Yeah, Chief, how many schools are involved in the Dare program with the city right now?
We have five, four, I'm sorry, four. There's Bonneville, there's Laurel Elementary, Scottstown, and Deerfield.
Okay, excellent.
What was the one?
Deerfield.
Bonneville, Scottstown, Laurel Elementary.
Deerfield.
Deerfield.
And Oakland has solicited us to see if we'd be interested in doing them also.
Is the county still running a Dare program or you're it?
As far as I know, we are it. I have not heard that Prince George's County is doing it any longer. And obviously, the new thing that we've done is we also do the T-shirts, which advertise Laurel Police Department Dare Program. We also do Dare Day, where we bring the kids in from the school. We give them tours of the police station, let them play with stuff, and we feed them and give them a break. It's kind of a reward. It's their graduation.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. President.
Ms. Nicholas?
I just want to say that the Dare program is very popular, and I hear a lot of parents talk about it. They've seen it, and they think it's very interesting.
Thank you.
Mr. Smalls?
Thank you, Mr. President. Chief, I know that a part of the support that your department gets is from grants, various grants state and, I presume, federal grants as well. Is there anything in the budget that kind of addresses anticipated grant funding? I can't find your budget on my tablet, so I'm kind of...
I do have details of our grants, yes. We have Department of Justice grants, we have cops grants, body armor grants, there's some different grants that we do participate in and that we get money from.
I think it's important for those people who are paying attention to this budget to know that there are grants that the Police Department and other departments seek...
Oh, absolutely. Yes, sir.
...to help support the services you provide. Okay.
The Governor's Office is great for, they provide a lot of funding.
Right. Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Department of Public Works, Mr. Free.
Yes, good evening. Overall, our budget has reduced by $46,526. Reductions will be, I believe ours started on page 107. On page 118, which is the shop, there was a reduction for gas and diesel, both of those with the prices of oil dropping in a manner, so what they did, we've looked at it and believe that these reductions won't hurt the city at all by taking a few thousand dollars out of this line items. The other reduction was on page 125. It's the 105, 420, 61010 account. Every year, we try to purchase recycle and refuse, commercial refuse containers, and what we've done is encumbered money out of this year's operating budget so that it could be reduced for next year's. And it was reduced by $27,500. Other than that, everything else remained the same.
Okay, Mr. Smalls, any questions?
No questions.
Mr. Liz? Ms. Nicholas?
I missed the first thing that you said. You said, "Do you need gas?"
No. The overall budget for the Department of Public Works was reduced by $46,000. The gas and diesel, get back to that page, was on page 118. The diesel is 105, 410, 52, 551. That was reduced by 98, 26. And gasoline is 105, 410, 52, 552. That was reduced by 9,200.
Thank you, Mr. Free. Appreciate your time. Move on to Department of Parks and Recreation.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I will be presenting the recreation portion, and Mr. Bailey will be presenting the facilities and grounds portion.
Thank you.
First, I'll say our narrative begins on 100, page 148, and the 501 administrative budget will begin on 162. We have a few organizational changes that we are proposing. That would be the change of the deputy director position to assistant director positions similar to the Department of Public Works. As well, we are proposing the addition of a laborer three to be funded in January as a result of the changes that we have coming to the Armory Community Center, anticipating that the lower level will be a primary entrance to the facility, requiring and allowing for more people to be using the facility with the addition of bathrooms, the addition of several other rooms. We anticipate the need for increased janitorial staff.
When you say that, increase the janitorial staff, I mean...
Right now, I'm sorry.
No, you're going to hire additional people, or you're going to use our additional staff?
Currently, that position splits the janitorial staff at the Armory, is a split position with the Department of Public Works, so we only have four hours' worth of janitorial support for that building. Again, with the additional bathroom facilities, the additional amenities that we have in the building, and now it would become a three-floor usable space, we're concerned that we wouldn't have enough janitorial support. So a full-time position, that position will become a full-time position, then the additional hours that frees up for the individual that would be handling the public works department would be used towards cleaning the cabana, cleaning the pool meeting room, cleaning the lake house, and all of our out buildings that are used for rental facilities.
Thank you.
So if we can turn to page 162, that's the 501 Recreation Administration budget. We did have a slight decrease in auxiliary staffing costs, and it's just an adjustment from what we've been using over the past several years. Down to line 52, 421 per diem, and 52, 422 hotel travel. We have increased these budgets. Actually, we have transferred money out of the training budget into this budget to accommodate the MML convention, as I am now part of several committees for Maryland Municipal League. So those are the only changes in that budget. Next would be the 505 Recreation budget. As we go through our budget, you'll notice that the increase in compensation is a result of the change in the minimum wage increase. So all of our budgets have increased for our recreational and auxiliary staff positions. We had a $600 reduction in background investigations that has actually been transferred to the Department of Budget and Personnel Services, as they will now be handling, receiving the billing for the background investigations. These are for staff members, for day camp, for senior programs, for any youth program that we do offer. We do background investigation and fingerprinting. As well, we have reduced the outside services budget, where we were funding the Briegea Concert Program. They have moved to the town center. We took the opportunity to reallocate those monies into various other line items. So as we go through the budget, we find them in several of our budget line items.
Could I, I'm sorry, could I interrupt you to say that again?
We reduced the Briegea program. We had previously funded the Briegea teen concert program. They are no longer doing that through us. They are doing that through the town center. So we took the opportunity to move those funds around into various other programs.
Okay. Thank you.
We increased the concession budget by $500, and that's to cover the cost for purchasing food items for the emergency operations center when we have the need for staffing and those types of things. Next, we have the 52804, our special events budget. This is where we reallocated some of the money from the outside services budget, an additional $8,600 to fund the addition of movies and concerts. We're looking to do a multicultural festival, and then also to make some changes to the city holiday festival, the tree lighting and parade program in the winter. Additionally, we have reallocated an additional $10,000 into the youth sports program, anticipating the acquisition of a football program. WISE is very much interested in working with the Laurel Hurricanes to bring back a youth football program, and we have put money into this budget to assist them with trying to get that program started. We've had a lot of interest in that program. So those are the changes to the recreation 505. Next, on page 171, that's the 510 Municipal Pool. Again, you'll see the difference in compensation with the minimum wage increase. The only other increase we have was a small increase in license renewals, license renewals, and this is for PG County licenses. The cost of licenses has increased through the county, and that is reflected in this Next, we have page 175. That's the 515 Robert J. DePietro Community Center. Again, no real changes. We had a $500 reduction in 52062 advertising meetings and events. We've found that we have not really used this advertising money as the use of social media, and other types of advertising have really taken the place of this paid advertisement. Next, we have page 178. That would be the Greenview Drive programs. Again, the only slight increase is in the Prince George's County license, and that's to operate both the pool and the concession stand. Next, we have page 181. That's the Armory Community Center program. We have an increase, a small increase, in auxiliary staffing hours, and again, this is to accommodate the additional individual that we're going to anticipate using during the daytime down in the lower level, as that is going to become a primary entrance for the fitness room. We will have a desk there that enables people to come in, use their membership card to gain entrance into the fitness room. So we will have a person during the daytime hours. We don't have auxiliary staff. In the evening, we have individuals currently on staff that we will be using to accommodate this need. That would be the only change. Page 184, that would be the lake house programs. Again, just a small increase for the concession license through Prince George's County. Next, we have 550. That is the senior service budget. This is a reduction of $1,600 out of instructors and interpreters, as we have, most of our programs fall into trips and tours and special events. We're finding that we don't have as many classes requiring instructors, as those programs are really being met through the Laurel-Beltsville Senior Center. But it's also important to note that there's a $54,400 grant from the county that we receive for senior programs, reimbursable hours for senior programs, as well as a $22,000 youth and teen after-school program grant and a $50,000 special events grant. So these all go directly into programs for those particular areas, senior citizens, teens and youth, and community-wide special events. Are there any questions on the recreation?
Any questions for Ms. Barr before we leave? Thank you, Ms. Barr. Bill, good evening. How are you?
Good evening, everyone. So what I'm presenting is the facility side of the Parks and Recreation. What I have is the 11 budgets that represent all the buildings for the city. So if we start on page 193, that will be the grounds maintenance, 280. And I'm just going to highlight the larger items than these. So in 280 grounds maintenance, we decreased the outside services by $5,000, and we increased, we used that money reallocated within the budget, and we increased the water and sewer. And we are anticipating with the new emancipation fountain that's going to be down there, we're going to have some charges for that water fountain, the water feature that's going to be down there. And we also are going to use that towards the watering of the flower pots on Main Street that we put out every year. They just went out before Main Street, 22 flower pots, but we water those. The tree maintenance, we increased that by $1,000 because we never have enough in that account. It seems like we're always young with tree issues in the city. Page 197, that's the Laurel Municipal Center. There were no major increases in this budget. We just reallocated the money within this bigger line item or budget just to help out with any additional expenses that we incurred in this. And most of these budgets, you're going to see that there weren't any major increases. We just, a lot of cases, just reallocated the money that was already in that line or within that budget, and we just moved the money around to help it with either utilities, you know, adjusted it, either water utilities, moved it to electric, vice versa. Page 199, that's Public Works. Again, with this, there were no major increases in this budget as well. The budget stayed pretty much the same as last year. 285 is the Robert J. DePietro Community Center. That's on page 203. We did increase the maintenance other in this one by $1,000, and we anticipate that to be used towards the new bleachers that were added this year. They usually have a one-year warranty. After that one year, then it's on us for regular routine maintenance on it. We put that $1,000 in there for that. And as you already know, we did replace, or we are replacing the lights over there shortly. That order has been placed, so probably within the next, within a month, they should begin work over there on the LED project. Page 206, it would be the Laurel Armory. With this, as Joanne noted, with the renovations that will be done here shortly at that building, we anticipate some slight increases with electric, utility, electric, water, sewer, the heating, HVAC, janitorial supplies. All this is to be anticipated with the new renovations that will be taken on. And as she also noted, the new custodian position would help out with this as well. That starts January 1. A full-time custodian would be assigned, you know, all the way to that building eight hours a day versus the current four hours a day that we now have them. 287, I'm sorry, yeah.
287, which is the Laurel Museum, that's on page 208. Again, that budget always remains the same, that $11,000. We don't anticipate any change. 288 is the lake house, page 10. Following all the rest of the budgets, the lake house, the Laurel Municipal Pool, Greenview Drive, Laurel Police Department, and the Parks and Recreation Facility up on Main Street, that's 175. All these were, well, it's been, last year, quite a bit snowed, increased, but all of these items, as you can see, again, all the money we use, we just reallocate it, it was already there, so make the adjustments in any utility fees or...
Thank you. Mr. Smalls, any questions?
Just a little information, more than a question. I just wanted to understand a little clearer. On the janitorial position that you're increasing, is that going to be a new position, or it's a person who is presently doing it part-time going to switch over?
Yeah, this is, we're asking for a new position.
Okay.
So as stated by Joanne, right now, we have one person that splits his time eight, four hours a day at the Armory and four hours a day at the telecourt. With this new position, we will allow for the one person to stay at the Armory for eight hours a day because of the additional space that we're going to defer with the renovations. The new position then will take on the Public Works four hours a day, and then he'll be used as our floater to take care of all of our extension buildings, Greenview Drive, Laurel River, and Lake House. Now, we currently send somebody like someone from this facility to go down to the pool and we clean it as needed. So that's what we're anticipating for.
And Joanne promised... And Joanne probably said that, I just didn't pick up on it right away, so great. Thank you.
Ms. Nicklaus. Mr. Les.
The electric for the lake fountains, they come through Gooty, the Lake House. That's why the electric bill is so high.
Well, they're only turned on.
I know. There's still a substantial amount of electric for that little building.
Yeah, and so are the lake paths, the lights around the path also.
Okay, so that...
They're on it. That's all the, I think there's 17 lights in Gooty, got Lake Two, Lake One, the path coming down, the lights coming down the path, the fountains.
Okay, excellent. All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Ms. Creary, welcome. We thank you for doing that duty.
You're welcome. I might have missed it. Tree budget? Is it increasing?
We increased it by 1,000, yes. And these are troubled trees that are potentially handling, relating into property, homeowners, properties, or other fences or something like that that we can't, we can't take down.
Developments fees? It's split between you and the Public Works or any contributions coming in? Green fees?
We bring those in with a budget amendment as they're used.
As they come, okay.
To increase those, those amounts of trees in the public right of way or in the parks. But not until it's needed. It's in a holding account until then.
Until then. Thank you.
Mr. President, if I could, talking about trees, is there any money in the F-forestation budget? The fee in lieu of, Michelle?
I would have to check. There is some, I don't remember the exact balance, but...
We let, we let the Parks and Recreation utilize that if they're going to plant trees. Yeah, okay.
All the forest uses it to do the Main Street trees.
Yeah, okay, great.
And that goes towards our Trio SA status.
Excellent. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President.
Go ahead, sir.
If I could just sort of follow on to that, to that kind of question. Can that money also be used for maintenance, that is, tree removal? Or is it just for planting new trees and shrubs?
It's just for new trees, replacements or, or new.
Okay. But I'm just fishing. If there's a, if there's a situation where you're removing a tree and going to replace, you can't use that funds for both? It's got to be a separate line item that'll come out of a budget for the removal? And then the fee in lieu of dollars could be used possibly for replacement?
Yes.
Okay, all right, okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Mr. Mayor and, and Ms. Barr, I've noticed that we use, we've got over 200 and some acres of parkland and city land and that sort of thing. And I, I've noticed that we use contractors to take care of some of that. I'm sorry?
For parks, yes.
Yeah. So what I'm wondering is, have we done an analysis to determine whether or not it is cost-effective to continue to use those contractors as opposed to hiring new people to do the job?
I think they'd have been calling us over years ago, that was the option, either bring on another body or...
Yeah, once all the benefits, in addition to the salary, it was determined to be more cost-effective to use. And, and then the additional equipment that we would have to purchase in order for those people to have, to be able to do the mowing and that sort of thing. It was more cost-effective to, to contract that service out.
Well, I think it's one thing we just got to try to keep our fingers on because certainly, I know it costs money. I know they're making money. And so I'm just thinking, you know, if we can offer more jobs that benefit to us because we have that person here all the time rather than a little bit of time that they spend on that particular project. I don't mean it to minimize it, but I just, I'd like to be able to know that we're getting the biggest bang for our buck. That's what I need. Okay. Any questions from anyone else? All right, let's move on to the next item. Who's operating budget non-departmental? Who's going to speak to that? Ms. Saylor.
The non-departmental budget begins on 200, page 221. The total for that is $7,768,605. It includes the budget for the debt service that we pay on our existing debt, as well as the city's pension contribution to the pension fund, employee training, employee tuition, property insurance, employee health insurance, and any transfers to the CIP, as well as the appropriation of the special taxing district funds. There is no proposed operating transfer to the CIP in the FY17 budget as we've discussed, the other funding sources, as well as the financing package that I'm continuing to work on. So on page 223 is the debt service budget, the principal and interest payments on the debt we currently have, as well as an estimated payment for the upcoming debt that we'll bring to you to fund the capital improvement program. The lines that are zeroed out, as you'll recall in February, when you approved the consolidation of the loans we had for the purchase of the 811 Fifth Street for the police department, as well as the 7703 and 05 Sandy Spring Road for the Parks and Recreation Maintenance Facility. Those have been consolidated into one line. And then we had the new loan to fund the purchase of the refuse truck and Ashford Boulevard and Cherry Lane reconstruction. That's the information I have. Mr. Green is here if you have any questions about the employer contribution to the pension fund or the employee health insurance. Ms. Hague is here if you want her to present the information on the property insurance.
Any questions? Mr. Smalls? Ms. Creary?
Not at this time.
None?
Not at this time.
Mr. Les?
Michelle, why has the worker's comp gone up so much? Did our, did our, our experience rate go up? Do we have some claims that caused the experience rate to go up? It's gone from about $400,000 in 2015 to a proposed $516,000.
If I could have Mr. Green or Mrs. Hague address that. I know that workers' comp is related to the compensation that we pay as a percentage, so beyond that...
It's also driven by the experience rate based on how many claims you make.
There, I'm sorry, the two of them are more closely related to working with the experience on the claims, so...
Just, just curious why it went up so much.
Our workers' comp is based on many, on many issues, one being our payroll. Stop touching it.
Want to stay on?
There you go. One being our payroll, our experience rating that has gone up a little bit, and also the rates of the state of Maryland sets.
There was a general rate increase in the state of Maryland?
Yes.
They had to get more, huh? I assume our experience rate didn't go up that much.
Just a little bit.
Yeah, because I think we've got a pretty good record here.
Yes.
Okay, I just, I was just curious. Not criticizing, just asking. It'll go down next year, Mike? Well, let me ask you that. Let me, this is a general information item. How often do they adjust the state rates? That's not done every year.
I don't know what drives that.
Is that the insurance commissioner sets the rates? Yeah.
Yeah, that's entirely out of our...
Oh, all right.
But our experience rate is, is been very good. It's not slightly coming here.
Uh-huh, okay.
And payroll plays a major part.
Yeah, I understand. Payroll goes up the, that little chunk goes up too. Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thanks, Mr. President.
All right, any other questions, Ms. Nicklaus?
Um, the employee training and tuition, does that fluctuate each year?
The budget tends not to. The actual use does quite a bit. For this year, we've taken a slightly different tack. We're not funding everything that the departments have asked for, looking very strongly at actual history. But we've added a miscellaneous line of $2,000. So if there's something that's needed at the end of the year, we have some funds to make up what we took out. There are some lines that we did not touch, including the new fire marshal's office, the police department. And there was one other, information technology. Those are pretty much what they asked for. Police department includes a contractual obligation to fund reimbursement of academy tuition. So if a new officer is hired that put himself through the academy, we have a contract with him to reimburse that at one-third a year for the first three years of his employment. So that's, that's an ongoing thing. Even if we stopped it today, it would have an effect for the next three years.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none. Thank you very much, Mr. Green. Thank you, Ms. Hague. Thank you, Ms. Saylor. Thank you, everyone. As you all know, this is an ongoing process. We'll be having public hearings and... So who's going to speak on that?
Michelle.
All right, Michelle, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I thought we'd done most of that. Go ahead. Capital improvements.
So moving on to the capital improvement program, I passed out a hard copy of a spreadsheet. Existing funded projects from FY 2016 and earlier, which as part of this process would be for you to reauthorize the funds that are currently remaining. As with the CIP, we can carry over those funds until the project is done or if we're accumulating funds, until we have enough to actually begin the project. The highlighted items are actually just a slight variation from this portion of the ordinance that was introduced on Monday night. The park improvement, it should have, it should have included the $100,000 we had already budgeted in FY 15 for the lights at the Cypress Street field. So again, these are all amounts that have previously been approved by you for these projects. And the projects are ongoing. They just don't anticipate, we don't anticipate having them completed by June 30th of this year. So we request through the budget process for you to reauthorize the funding so we can continue and complete the projects.
Will that be done by ordinance?
This is part of the, of the budget ordinance. This is part of ordinance 1871.
So the highlighted areas you speak about is the one in yellow and the four in kind of a gray. Is that correct?
That's correct. Just like I said, a slight variation from what was part of the ordinance Monday night. The park improvement, the first shaded area. At that time when I did the ordinance, I apologize, it did not include the $100,000 that had already been approved for the, to have lights installed at the field, at Cypress Street Field. That money Mr. Lotzky had found was not going to be enough, so it hasn't been spent yet. In the new CIP, we're asking for additional funds to be able to complete the project.
Being Ashford Court and Ashford Place?
Ashford Court and Ashford Place are, so these next four lines that are shaded are part of a, an ordinance that's before you, 1872, where we're taking the remaining, remaining balances from Ashford Court, Ashford Place, and most of the remainder of Cherrywood Drive, we still have an invoice to pay. Those balances are being transferred to the Dorset Road project for the reasons that Mr. Flemian and Mr. Ferry had gone over as far as adjusting something in the roadway, the bridge work that hopefully the county will pay for, but in case they don't. So those four shaded lines reflect your hopeful approval of ordinance 1872.
So the remaining amounts from Ashford Court and Place are proposed to be transferred over to the Dorset Road project?
Correct.
Everyone get that here? Okay. All right.
So that's that portion. The other spreadsheet with, I'm sorry.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Just to make sure I'm clear. So is the $464,945 that amount that's being transferred?
No, that, with the approval of ordinance 1872, to move the money from Ashford Court, Ashford Place, and Cherrywood Drive, that would be the balance of the Dorset Road project. When those other, there's already 362,000 remaining in the Dorset Road project. So by taking Ash, the two Ashfords and the Cherrywood Drive, adding them to what's in the Dorset Road, there will then be an available balance of 464,945 in the Dorset Road project.
But how do we know how much is being transferred from Ashford? Because it's zero here.
Right. I just wanted to show the difference from what I had initially put in ordinance 1871. But if you look on ordinance 1872, it shows the breakout of each project and the subtraction of those amounts on those three projects and in addition to Dorset Road. So it is actually itemized in an, in another...
Got it.
Okay.
Okay. Any questions from anybody here?
I have...
Sure.
Again, more probably a comment. Well, I, I presume, Michelle, it's safe to presume that with those transfer funds for the Dorset Road project, that these other projects are at some point, at a point where it's not jeopardizing that the project, if it's completed or if it's not completed or whatever the status is.
They are actually completed. The three, those three streets projects are completed. We have one more invoice for Cherrywood Drive, which we know what that amount will be. So these, this money is, is completely available for you to approve the transfer.
Sure, for the sake of, of this discussion, to make sure that it's understood that the money that's coming from those projects, the projects are complete, so we're not abandoning projects.
No, no.
In order to put funds into the Dorset Road project.
No, those three streets have been completed.
Thank you.
That's what I had. Again, any other questions to the council? Anything else from you, Ms. Saylor?
So on the other spreadsheet, these are the new projects.
The one with marked in yellow?
Yes. Again, this was part of ordinance 1871. The highlighted line for the facility survey project is just a funding source change I would like to make. I previously had it as financed. I previously had it as financed, but we have some available funds that we had transferred in FY 15 to the CIP. I would not like to finance a project such as this. It's usually just miscellaneous engineering costs, so it's not really finance-worthy. So, the projects are itemized here. As far as titles, funding source, there's a reference to the page number in the document, and then the estimated cost of the project. On the second page, there's a total, a grand total of the projects. But I've also provided you with a summary of the funding sources, so it gives you a subtotal for each of the funding sources as well as breaking it out into project types such as street projects, technical, parks and facilities, fleet, infrastructure, safety.
This is a new way we have to think about combining the budget and the capital improvements program to see the full vision, as what we've talked about in the past.
Right. This is just a summary I, I wanted to put together to help myself as, as much as anybody else. In, you know, the, the volume of pages that our document is, even before they were combined, just to see it in a couple pages worth, summarize the funding sources, summarize what types of projects that we're working on.
I commend you and your staff for doing the job and all the other department heads that have put up with us and our requests and the administration as well. So, any other questions from the council?
I'd just like to ask, Mr. President, Michelle, if you wouldn't mind. I don't know if the other council members would be interested, but if I could have this in electronic format, I'd like to combine it with the other pages of the CIP.
Combine this into the electronic document we already have? Good for all of us.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anything else from anybody? Creary? Ms. Led? Ms. Nicholas? Mr. Smalls?
I'm fine. Thank you.
Thank you all very much. We stand.